Good afternoon, everybody. I hope you all had a great Christmas. Please turn off your cell phones.
Turn your mic down, Dan.
Pardon?
Your mic.
Thanks. That helps. You want to take a roll, please?
Dan.
Here.
Wanda. Ryan.
Here.
John.
Here.
Here.
Don.
Here.
You have the agenda before you, and are there any changes to the agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
First, I have to ask if anybody's got a financial conflict of interest.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not. Okay, now approval of the agenda.
I still move.
I'll second.
Motion and a second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is the time for persons to address this body on any subject. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item on which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There shall be no personal attacks against the members of this body, county staff, individual, or organization. The chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in forfeiture of the remaining speaking time. Does anybody have, yeah, a public comment? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move on. First item on the agenda is the chiller bid. Jeff.
Not sure if that's on.
No.
There we go. So, yeah, we're looking again at the proposal for the chiller. The Johnson Controls was able to find one that they could get within about 10 weeks' lead time, which would put us early spring for installation.
Jeff, for the people at home, kind of take a step back to the summer and what problems it's caused and just so everybody understands why this is important.
Sure, yeah, the chiller here at the Government Center
Hi, Wanda.
is the original chiller.
Have you started yet? Yep.
Just started.
Jeff, I'm here.
Thank you. We're on item one, chiller bid. Item five, chiller bid. Okay, Jeff.
So, the summer, basically, it fried the switch panel outside. There's three 250 amp fuses in there, and it flash arced inside. The chiller is just, it's exhausted. It's lived its life. There's some problems with the compressors. There's problems with the cooling fins that were damaged. They're starting to rot away. So, we've decided that trying to fix it is not an option. It's better to replace it and get a more efficient unit. The unit that's in there, when it gets to full capacity, all of the compressors run at 100%. And the unit we're looking at replacing it with, of course, would be new. So, the compressors, there would always be one out of sequence. So, it would run, say, one through seven of the compressors. Number eight would be off, and then it would switch number eight on, and number one would go off. It would go through that, so they have time to basically cool down, so their lifecycle is longer.
And then, for those of you guys who don't know, Jeff, this summer was coming in in the middle of the night to recycle it, and he put in a lot of hours and a lot of work that he didn't have to, to try to keep it going. I don't think you want to relive that, do you?
No. It's not good for me, or obviously, the building itself.
Plus the fact that it's 27 years old and well beyond its normal lifespan.
And it was probably maybe a little too small to begin with, but...
Well, again, there were some things that unfortunately were done to it that I think shortened its life. Someone tried to pressure wash the fins rather than just rinse it off with a garden hose, and it bent all the fins over.
That doesn't help.
So, we've, since I've been here and since prior to that, we've tried to straighten them, while you're only getting some of the outside ones, the inside ones are still completely compressed. So, the airflow is way less than it should be, which has been obviously harder on the unit than it would have been had that not ever happened.
I don't really see any options, so we gotta do it.
Entertain a motion to approve the purchase of a...
I move to approve the bid.
Now, there's some wordage.
I'm sorry, it sounds like somebody's not using their microphone.
We are, Wanda, we promise.
There's some...
Everybody's got theirs on except the one way down on the right end.
Okay, well, yeah, they'll turn them on, and then they lean back.
So, yeah, there's some verbiage there so that we didn't have to do the bidding process so that we could go through Sourcewell, and that number is all specified there, basically so that we, the county doesn't get into any kind of trouble for doing it this way.
Okay, I'll make the motion, then. The County Commission, Wanda?
I would make a motion to approve the purchase of the chiller unit.
Thank you.
Okay, the wordage we have to have in it is the County Commission Board motion. The Yankton County Commission members state a motion to use national cooperative purchasing in accordance with Johnson Controls slash Sourcewell contract number 070121-JHN for improvements to our facility, including but not limited to HVAC and Controls improvements.
Then I'll second.
Wanda's got a second? Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote is the same, motion carries.
Thank you, Jeff.
Are we still keeping Ryan, or you?
Pardon? Done.
Yeah. What are you doing, what? Never mind.
That confused me, too, Wanda. I got here just a little bit before, and I thought maybe I was gonna be, have to stand in the corner for a while. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, thanks for all the work you've done. Hope you had a good holiday.
Yeah, the work.
Okay. County, next item on the agenda is the county liability insurance.
Well, thanks for having us back. We've done this before, not usually this late, but we've always been in December, sometimes early December, sometimes middle, sometimes toward the end, depending on when we get our numbers and when you have your meetings. So, today, we got, today, you gotta make a decision. And what I want to visit with you about is, we've been doing this business, Smith Insurance, for the county for a long time, and been through thick and thin. I've never had any problems with the county, and I don't think the county that I know of has any problems with us and our services. That's the way we like it. The proof of the pudding is, when you have a claim, how fast does that get taken care of? Does it get paid properly? There are arguments, discussions, whatever. And to my knowledge, in the 50 years, we've never had a problem. Some time ago, in fact, I remember when Bob Shavis was State's Attorney, we thought we were gonna have a problem, and it went away with some conversation with the insurance company. Now, the last 20 years or so, you've been insured with the EMC Insurance Company. Their office is out of Omaha, and they have the service office in Norfolk. To give you an idea, I don't know if you guys, and I, Wanda, you're included in this, how much claim activity the county has. So, I wanted to just give you a brief number, a brief discussion of number of claims. In the year 22, 2022, there was, excuse me, year 2023, this year, 28 claims. Those are workers' compensation claims, not included worker compensation claims. Don, I see you looking at some sheets. Did you look at that sheet, workers' comp sheet that we had losses on? Yeah? Yeah. And...
What I got says 10 workers' compensation.
Per year, and there's the one with 13 and one with seven and so forth.
We're down this year from past years.
So far.
Everybody be careful today, when we leave.
Well, and that brings me to the fact that you can ask for, and we can provide, the insurance company can provide some safety training. All you have to do is call, and we can get it initiated. The problem with that is that you get it started and it doesn't keep going. They're away from work longer than they should be away from work, those kind of things. But the important thing is, I guess, getting somebody else to look to see how you're doing things. Now, I think when those things are all done, you do their planning, and you gotta be a little lucky not to have claims. That's, luck goes into a big deal. The important thing that I think with EMC Insurance Company is their county commission liability policy. That's for you people and for the bunch, whoever came before you. That policy has, goes back, coverage back to 2000, 2000, I want to make sure I get it right, 2009, 2003, excuse me, 1993, 1993. Anything that's happened in this chambers, starting 1993, that eventually turns into a claim, that linebacker policy, that county commission policy, provides coverage for it. It's called a retrodate, and it's a very important item. I think everybody here, maybe John and maybe Ryan, you guys don't know about that Beatrice claim they had down in Nebraska, where there was a claim, and the claim was filed 20 years later, you've got, I think I maybe put it in your folder. It was just a bad deal. And it got to be to the point where one insurance company's looking after another, looking to the other insurance company to pay, and neither one of them were gonna pay. And they had to come to some agreement to get it resolved, and that shouldn't happen. But it did, and I'm sure it's happened elsewhere. But that county commission liability policy for you people is very important. The auto insurance, the liability insurance, the workers' compensation insurance, that's important to your employees and to the people of Yankton. But as you people sit and makes decisions, it's important that the decision you make, if it's brought to trial, that somebody there behind you taking care of it, defending and paying. Now, just two years ago, two years ago, there was, right now, there's, in the last five years, been 13 claims against the commission. There's five of them still open. The others have been resolved, paid or resolved. But... And they've been...
Right now, there's five claims open.
Five claims open. That...
I'm sorry?
Five claims are open in some way, shape, or form. They're either along, I don't know where they are in the process, but they are still open. And the company puts a reserve on that, just in case something happens and they have to make payment. They'll do that. Is that what you're looking for? For the last five years, there's 13 claims. Eight of them have been paid, and it's almost half a million dollars they've paid, and then there's still five of them open. And it's important to have that, that's an important coverage for, that's the most important coverage for you, for this board, and it's no small matter. But we've serviced this county business for a long time, done the best we could, and I think we've done well. The commissioner's always been pleased, that I know of, actually, behind closed doors, I don't know about it. It's an executive session, I don't know about it. But we think we've done a real good job of putting everything together, giving you the insurance you need, no more, no less. You don't like the increases any more than we do. The workers' compensation, I told you last meeting, went up 24%. That's because of three-year loss ratios being higher than normal, and then the rest of your insurance went up about 7%. A lot of that being the valuation of the buildings and changing vehicles and so forth.
Roger, can you give us an example of one or two of those claims that are open? Still open?
Um...
Back claims?
You know...
No names or anything, just...
Well, I know, but most of those claims are zoning issues, hog issues, zoning issues. I would say those are probably the open ones. They've got a claim number and name, but I, if I remember, I couldn't tell you anyway, but those are, most of them, zoning, zoning issues, zoning problems. In fact, we had one just the other day, was a contract problem that we just, it just got filed. But...
Yuri, are you aware of any of those that aren't?
I would think that you get to the point where most of those should be in the clothes.
Most of which?
You'd think they'd be kind of, they've all gone to either court or been settled or something. I guess I don't, I'm not aware of that. For this liability, is it, you don't happen to have a breakdown by, like, department? It just seems, you know, obviously, jail, a lot of these are jail and ambulance claims, it looks like. I mean, is that the majority of them, those departments, I suppose?
Well, workers' compensation claims.
Yeah, for worker, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you know, that's a dangerous business with inmates and saving people's lives, so it makes sense that that's the case.
Yeah. Well, the county does a lot of things.
Yeah.
Roads and bridges and law enforcement and so forth. So, with our service and that linebacker policy, I don't think that county commission liability policy, I don't think, I don't know of anybody that could do a better job for the Yankton County than what we've been doing all these years. I've appreciated the business. I've appreciated visiting with the commissioners whenever they need me. I know the people in the office, I have a good rapport with them and they with me. There's one issue that I don't think Paul's here. That the fire pack policy, though it's with the ambulance and the emergency management, that's a separate policy, and that you would like to keep that where it is, and you will have to make a decision whether you want to do that or not. That's up to you. I thought maybe Paul might be here. Anybody have any questions? I'll answer them. Just to get one more comment on that deal in Beatrice. When it all came said and done, and they got payments made from the insurance company, that was a $28 million, $28 million problem, and, you know, they had a $5 million umbrella, even if that happened in Yankton County, you'd still be short a hell of a lot of money when a case comes up to $28 million. My recommendation would be maybe to look at your umbrella insurance a little bit. It's been very, it's been, it's been well enough so far, but times are changing, claims are changing, and people are changing. So, unless you have questions, I'll sit, and then you guys have to decide which way you want to go, and we'll accept it and go about our business.
Maybe not that it makes a difference or if it's not, but I'm wondering, and if you don't want to say why, but I'm wondering why there's a difference in the change between you and the two gentlemen that were here.
Well, that's their service, their service from Omaha, which gives us another field of experts, really, that we're looking for. And they do a lot of it down in Nebraska, more than I do in Yankton, of course, but they're a statewide operation. They do a lot of schools, cities, counties in Nebraska, and that's just another person checking over what we're doing and how we're doing it.
Roger, is that the same that EMC does?
Excuse me?
It's the same as what EMC does.
Yes.
They do all our cases and...
Yes, yeah. This RJ Gall, do you want to say a few words?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak on behalf of that. So, what ended up happening is Smith Insurance, EMC was going to take the insurance. There's a lot of small towns that just had one policy, and it was with a municipality or a school, and that's all Smith Insurance had. EMC wanted to continue to grow that. So, they were gonna pull all of the EMC policies in South Dakota, take them to Mowbridge. And the relationship that we had with Roger, he goes, you guys would be better, and we know each other, if we can work together on this and keep it closer and continue to provide the service. They wanted to pull all the services to the Mowbridge branch. I don't want to do that. Our goal is to work together, and we keep everything exactly the same, where it's all running through Smith Insurance. So, that's how it came to be. Do we do others? Yes, but that was not for us to go out and seek. It was really if we could help and keep it local and keep it working with Smith Insurance, that was our goal, and that was the only thing that we were trying to do. So, I guess I just wanted to...
That's a great explanation, thank you.
Do you guys do any other insurance for any other counties or cities in South Dakota, or would we be the only one?
You would be the only one in South Dakota.
Okay.
Again, everything else moves to that Mowbridge. And like I said, we just have the relationship here, and that's why.
Okay.
That's it.
Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question, since I can't see what's going on. Are, is the quote or the bill broken down into different areas, like workers' comp and property liability insurance and county committee or county commissioner policy?
Yes, we break them down when we deliver the bill by department. Police?
I'm just asking because I cannot see it. And I've been a little into it for the last week, so...
Is that, do you want any more information on that, Wanda?
No, I just wanted to know how it was broken down.
Okay, thank you.
We break it down for Patty so she can pay it by department. Is that what you're asking?
Any questions?
Okay, so, the ambulance and emergency manager...
Hearing no other questions, I entertain a motion to...
Do you have the...
Do you want?
...approve the... Pardon?
Lynn.
Do you have, do you have what we pay for approximately?
Thank you.
For emergency management, yeah, for ambulance?
So, we've talked about the retro coverage in the past. We've quoted a couple different times, some different options. This year, we just quoted the one in two years. Last meeting, we had some conversations about statute of limitations that might apply to certain types of claims. You know, if the county is interested in participating in the pool's coverages, at some point, there is gonna need to be that decision. How far back do you want to do? How far back do you, do you want to do the retro coverage? Work with your state's attorney to identify what statute of limitations might apply, and then we can work and try to figure out how to bridge that gap in between the two. The, the thing that you, you, you want to keep in mind is EMC Insurance is an insurance company, they're there to make money. We have had, in the past five years, had to step up, where EMC Insurance canceled some counties because of their claims experience. And we weren't a last resort, but we stepped up. We were actually more affordable for those counties in those situations. But our goal is not to seek you out and then cancel you because you have claims. Our goal is to be a partner and figure out why you're having claims, and how we can help you either mitigate those claims or avoid them altogether. The pool was formed, developed to be a partner to public entities in South Dakota as a solution for a hardening market. I was in Tyndall last night, and there was a conversation about it's a hardening market, and it is. Property is hard, convective storms are hard. And, and I think at the last meeting, there was conversations about your wind hail deductibles changing and those structures changing. You're going to see a lot of that, and it's not gonna, they're not going to go back most likely to, okay, we're, we're seeing less convective storm activity, we'll bring those deductibles back down. Once you get used to them, that's probably what you're going to continue to see. As a pool, we understand that financing those types of unexpected gets difficult. So while we plan for the future, we may have to implement some deductible structure changes. We're also looking at solutions for how to finance those things within the county as well. How can we help you offset? So we're here to look for solutions to potential and, and future issues that may arise. We would be delighted to be a partner with, with the county, but at this point, you need to do what is absolutely best for the county. And, and we're here to respect that, and to, you know, continue to offer advice and services the best that we can. So if you have any questions for me, I did send along yesterday afternoon some updated information, because when you guys got your updated property values so late, we didn't have a chance, Patty couldn't share that with us, because she didn't get it until the same time you guys did, basically. So we did do some updated property quotes, just so you had a better idea of apples to apples. But again, those numbers would change once we did our survey. And our quote also includes bringing the ambulance in, into the pool as well. If you opted not to, then understand that those numbers would be different, because we would back out any ambulance property, whatever percentage share that would be of your budget and stuff like that. So that would be a reduction in costs as well.
Do you know what that reduction would be?
I don't know what that would be, because we haven't broken it out this year. We had in past years broke it out, but we didn't do that this year. So it just know that if you decided to leave your ambulance with the fire pack program, then this section would be less. But unfortunately, I can't tell you how much less that would be. I mean, we could go through and kind of pencil out and identify what the property part. I don't know what component of the liability it is, though, because we rate slightly differently on the liability side.
Any other questions?
No.
Dan?
No, I guess I don't have any at this time.
John? Ryan?
Not this time for here. This, I, I do, I guess one question on the, with the EMC and the fire pack, is that, so that, your quote here for the EMC, and then the fire pack is an extra on top of that?
That is correct.
Okay.
And, and your quote includes that?
Our quote includes the ambulance service, yep.
And emergency management?
Yep.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
No.
I'd then entertain a motion.
Well, what is, what is the difference?
Yeah, we're not...
Two, two hundred and, two hundred and, two forty-six?
Two forty-six plus twenty-five.
Plus twenty-five, so about, versus one seventy-five? Well, that's if we chose the most expensive option, right? The one seventy-five, that's what the...
Dan, can you talk into the mic?
Sorry. We're, we're looking at the total cost. And so the, the EMC one, from one twenty-four to one twenty-five, two hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred sixty-one, plus about tw- twenty-five thousand, is that correct?
It's going to be a, so it'd be two, two hundred and seventy-four thou- two hundred and seventy-four thousand roughly, in, with those two combined.
And then the other one is with three different options.
Yeah.
We got, and we'd have to choose what we want, the, what do most counties choose for, I, I know that's hard to say, but, you know, I...
So it really depends on your exposures. So would we, a couple of years ago, we, we took a look at this, and, because we have ten of the top twelve counties. Of the top twelve, we do not have you or Lincoln County, as far as the, the largest counties. At six million, you are, there's only two that have six million, it's you and one other county. We have a couple counties in that top twelve that have a million. Most are in the three to six, we have a couple that have five, and then the rest are right around that three million range. But when you're looking, when you're comparing the two numbers, and you're saying, okay, when you're looking at cost to cost, you need to look at our six million dollar number, so that you are comparing, because you've got six now with your one million dollar per occurrence limit with your five million dollar umbrella. So if you decide you want to go with something lower, that's fine, but when you're comparing pricing, you need to compare our six to Roger's number, just so that you get the same roughly.
Hundred thousand.
And, and I think I missed what you, when you started out talking about that look back issue.
The retro coverage, yep.
The retro coverage.
Yes, so our quote includes one or two years, and I think the final number at the bottom of the spreadsheet shows for two years. We have in the past quoted three and five years look back, and we can certainly do that again. The longer you go, the cheaper that number, like, the increased cost gets less and less, because the theory is those claims are going to have developed, and they are going to be noticed, or there's going to be statute of limitations arguments and things like that, so. So pricing wise, if we did do a, a three or a five, we might be able to go as far back as six. We can talk to the underwriters and reinsurance carriers about anything further than that. Five is usually the, the longest tail coverage we look back at. Honestly, if you have situations that you know of that may result in a claim, those would be considered known claims, and you should report those to your carrier. We would tell our members the same thing. Anytime you have a situation that you are aware that may or could result in a claim, we need to know. Just because we want to start gathering information while it's fresh. And then if it's, if something happens in a few years, then we've got it, right? You've got the claim file developed already, so.
From the standpoint of communications between the two organizations, where would the person or persons be located that we would contact if there were an issue?
So you would call me, and I would come from Harrisburg. Or if Roger wanted to partner with the pool, we'd be open to that as well.
And there's only one of you in the state, is that...
So we also have Becky, and she is in Wagner, and she could come over and service the account as well. Jerry is in Spearfish, you could call him. Christina is your, would be probably your, your dynamic underwriter. You could contact her with any questions, problems, comments, or concerns, and she's in Sioux Falls also.
What law firm does, does the fund use?
We have panel counsel, it depends on what type of claim you have. We have several different firms, so we work with Woods Fuller, we work with Fuller and Sabers, we work with the Boyce Law Firm. Those are kind of the big three in Sioux Falls. We do have a few outliers that we work with in Sioux Falls as far as litigation. I will be honest with you, our zoning claims are handled by Jack Heeb and Zach Peterson out of Richardson Law Firm in Aberdeen, simply because when those claims started to become a trend, Jack and Zach really got on them right away. They did all the research, and they've done phenomenal for us. They have come down to some of our counties down here and actually successfully defended a lot of those, those types of claims. And they answer our government practices hotline questions, especially as related to zoning, we send those up to them. We have the opportunity for other panel counsel. We are always open to adding panel counsel, as long as they fit within the guidelines that we've set forth. We want to make sure that they're, they're, you know, going to do good work for you, and, and they've got the knowledge and, and stuff to, to be successful for both you and the pool, so...
So it's a fair, there's not just one law firm, there's a whole other law firm.
Yes, yes, and we have firms across the state, so if for some reason we run into a conflict here, we would bring in someone from Pierre or Rapid City if necessary. No, we have partnerships with firms all across South Dakota.
Okay.
And your claims folks would come from Sioux Falls.
You guys are doing the math, the, on the difference?
I will make a motion that we switch to the South Dakota Pool Insurance Company for our property damage and liability and workers' comp.
So the workers' stays with the SDML?
Stays with it, okay. All right, got you, I got you.
Which, which level did you want to go, the one million, the three million, or the six million?
I left mine at home for some reason, I was looking at it last night, because you, to be... Well, to be fair, we're going to look at the bottom.
Well, that, that's what they said, right?
Yeah, to be fair to compare, as close as you can, you would look at the six. And you can, you can join with the six, and if you decide later you want to move, we can do a midterm change to, to reduce it, or we can change it if you'd like, but that's...
I, I agree with that, it's like, I think if we're going to consider a change, then we have to look at the six mil, and we have to look at having retro coverage.
Yeah, I would, I would add to that motion, then, that we looking at the six million dollar deductible policies.
Okay, and then with the two-year retro?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
So this is, so with Paul's thing in the fire pack, that's included in this.
Right.
So then we would be switching emergency management over to this as well.
I would like the option to leave Paul make that decision.
Yep, so what we can do, we can make it effective. We will not do an invoice right away, because we can then back that out, and then we'll send you an updated invoice without that. So for now, if, if that's what you're going to do, if you're going to join the pool, that's fantastic. We will join it as quoted, but then you can let me know, even tomorrow, hey, we're, we're going to join the pool, but take out these property locations, these vehicles, and we're going to back out this much out of our expenditures. And then that will reduce that price.
We do not want a lapse of coverage.
No, there would be no lapse of coverage. Nope, because this will start, your current policies will carry. Yep, nope, you're, you're right on, Wanda, and I appreciate that. Nope, so your current policies are in effect until January first. So we can change this tomorrow, because this coverage won't start until twelve oh one AM on January first, when your other coverage expires, so, nope, you are just fine.
Okay, so I don't know that I got the, the difference on what you guys were figuring about the difference between the two packages.
So, so the difference here is, okay, so the combination of the EMC and the fire pack is two hundred and seventy-four thousand. The six million with the two-year retro is two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, that's a difference of forty-six thousand dollars. Roughly.
With, what was the retro coverage? I didn't, I didn't have that written down.
Oh, the retro coverage was what, is a two twenty-seven, three sixty-four?
So this is the updated.
Okay, okay, so it's still, still a costly, it seems.
And so we're talking roughly fifty grand between the two different carriers?
Well, Lynn, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
With the workers' comp, when we get that bill, is there someone that will help me? Because Roger would always help me.
So Roger will stay as your agent on the work comp, because that's with the SDML, Workers' Compensation Fund. So Roger can still, I mean, you still work with him directly on workers' compensation questions and issues and stuff like that. Just like you have this whole time. Because we're two separate pools, and so Roger still absolutely can help you with that. And Roger can answer questions about the pool, he's familiar with the pool also. But yes, for work comp stuff especially, you will still work with Roger, because that is completely separate from the property liability coverage.
Either way, we're going to have no lapse of coverage, and we're going to save fifty thousand dollars.
Forty-six.
Forty-six thousand dollars.
Remember to use your microphone.
The cord doesn't come out any further, Wanda, I can't get it any closer.
Why isn't it? Just need to talk into the microphone.
Have a motion and a second, roll call vote?
John?
Aye.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Wanda?
Yeah.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, so I will work with Patty to, and if you want, I can come down tomorrow, or I can just hop on the phone with you, and we can figure out what comes out. And then I'll send you the paperwork for, then we can create the invoice, we'll get the, the intergovernmental contracts over to you and stuff like that, so. Wonderful, well, welcome to the SDPA, I think you'll be happy you're here.
Thank you.
So as of one, one, you're not, you're, you're pulling that coverage off your...
So they'll, for the ambulance service?
Yeah, ambulance and emergency management.
So confirm that that's what you want to do, we'll either...
I believe the motion was to allow Paul to make that decision.
And I'll talk to Paul tomorrow, or we'll talk to Paul and get that cleared up by tomorrow afternoon.
But, okay, but I mean, but you're going to, you're going to include it and then take it off, or what are you doing?
Yep, we can include it and take it off midterm, or we can...
No, it'll be January one.
Okay, then we'll just need to know by, basically, close of business tomorrow, what you want to do.
You may know that yet this afternoon.
Okay, and that's fine, it's just, this is the price including it.
I understand.
So just know that it will be less if we pull it out.
Let's, we'll probably get Paul over here and talk to him today.
Yep, he'll be here later.
You just want us to renew what we have had on those fire pack? Does that understand you correctly?
Can I let you know tomorrow afternoon, or this afternoon late?
Yeah.
But yes.
Yeah.
If Paul says he wants to stay with fire pack, then we'll get ahold of you and you renew that.
Well, I know he'll say that, but that's fine.
I do, I'm sure of it.
All right.
Thank you.
Do you want me to stick around to talk with Paul, or stay for a while?
It might be worth it to...
I know, I'm not sure when he'll, I can have them...
We'll go and see if he can come.
Yeah, see if he can come right away.
That'd be best.
I thank Mr. Smith for years of service.
Thanks, Roger.
Many years, well, he isn't done.
Well, I know, but he's been the carrier for many years.
Yes.
Yes, we have everything included right now, so...
Is he coming?
Uh, Alyssa's calling him.
Okay. Well, in the meantime, we'll...
We move on.
Move on. Year-end claims, Patty?
Uh, you have a list of the claims and the extra ones that came in today.
If I haven't been able to look at those, I'm going to exchange.
The only one ahead is the, the NAPA one, that's just the year-end calculation of what that brought in, I assume, for the expenditure?
No, no, we're talking about claims. That's, that's for the contingency.
That's for the, okay. I'd make a motion... That's for the, okay. Uh, I'd make a motion to approve the year-end claims.
I'll second.
A motion by Dan, second by Ryan. Discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose the same. Motion carries.
One extension.
One extension. Thank you.
And then next are the contingency transfers and the budgeted cash transfer.
I would move to approve the contingency transfers and the budgeted cash transfer.
Second.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by, uh, John. Discussion?
Don, I haven't looked at the documents, but I'm just relaying, relaying a message from Deb. She requests that the money allocated for the JDAI be to our office.
I'm gonna do that at the, um, January sixth meeting to close.
Okay.
Before we close the year.
As long as it has addressed.
Yep.
Is that for the grant, the grant that we get?
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be, that'd make sense.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yep.
So, they'll make the motion for that at the January sixth, seventh meeting?
Sounds good, thank you.
Did anybody second Wanda's?
Yep.
Okay, sorry.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. No? Motion carries.
Wanda, you made the motion. Are you good?
Yep.
Motion pass.
For the contingency transfers and the cash transfer? Correct. Yep, but you voted no? No, I didn't.
She said aye at the same time as we.
I thought she did no, too.
It was a little bit delayed.
Wanda, you need to use your microphone on your end.
Nothing yet.
I'll be better than what I've got.
Okay. The next item, uh, county wages.
Well, I, I have a question of why we're doing this county wages at the year-end meeting and not like the second meeting in January.
Did you want to speak on this, John?
I think one, one of the reasons, and this is just what I've heard, is, uh, we, we did pass the, the dollar fifteen hour wage increase for the ambulance service. We have, we do have other first responders and, and, uh, frontline people that are left out of that, and I guess I was just, had some concerns. Personally, um, I'm thinking that we need to take a look at the rest of the first responders also, um, but at same token, if, if you, uh, think we should wait till January, I don't have a problem with waiting.
This is the last day of the year.
For, yeah, and I, I'm, I wouldn't even attempt to do anything, I wouldn't even attempt to do anything retroactive moving forward, um, with, with the sheriff's department, the jailers, and, and some of those people. They're, I guess I would consider them frontline employees also, and we haven't done anything for them.
Yeah, I'd, I'd agree with John, we'd probably wait until the new year and...
I don't need to be a pain in the butt, but I thought that was the whole purpose of the handbook, with the steps and the grades and the moving this and the moving that.
I think, personally, I think the steps and the grades should be reevaluated, and it might not even hurt to put a task force together to look at that, because I don't think our, none of our wages are in line with the state, um, survey numbers either, so.
My understanding was the reason they did that in the first place is to make Yankton County's wages comparable, if you will, to surrounding counties, and they worked and worked, and of course, it was before my time. Um, it was during the Joe Healy, Sherry Losz, Dan Klemish, I'm...
I voted against it, so I just wanted to...
But I don't know who the other one is.
On the record.
Jerry Sutis, Terry McHale, and that was the whole point, so that we could just move and lockstep like the federal government does.
At the time when that thing was, that was put together, though, I think, a lot of things have changed since then, and I know we got the COI and things like that that are adjusted via the matrix, but, um, we've, we've got, according to the matrix, I believe, looking at it, I think we've got, uh, paramedics starting at just about the same wage as what a clerical person is, according to the matrix and the steps.
Well, in that case, you know, and maybe it is...
Well, if they don't want to be a paramedic, they can go be a clerical person somewhere in the county.
I, I, I think it, it can't hurt to reevaluate the ma- matrix.
Yeah.
And take a look at it.
And I propose we maybe start next year with it, instead of, instead of...
No.
I would say, I would say it would be better to be at the second meeting than the first.
Yes.
The first meeting, my God, just next week.
So, postpone it until the second.
Are you going to discuss the matrix and everything at the January second meeting?
I, I kinda liked Ryan's idea.
I don't know, I think we're just gonna discuss whether or not we need to...
Yes.
Discuss wages, would be my guess.
If we do...
That's why I had it on for today.
Per, per John's recommendation, I think this should be maybe a task force or a group that digs in and, and gets some real evidence. It, it shouldn't be, it, it, it should take a little time to do the proper research on it.
I think it's something that you work together with your department.
Exactly, yep. I, I would agree. So, let's postpone the discussion and...
True, but you must be mindful that we are not the city of Yankton with a sales tax.
I understand that wholeheartedly.
Let's...
And, and I'm, and I'm not suggesting that we go out and, and meet the salaries or wages of Minnehaha County or, or Union County. I'm just saying that we need to adjust our scale accordingly to maybe the state average or something. There's, there's gotta be a happy medium in there. When you've got paramedics making the same amount of money as starting, now, granted, the steps making an adjustment to that, but, and experience, but, um, when, when, if you went by the matrix and they're starting a, a paramedic who's gone to school, paid for the, the, his licensing and stuff like that, starting at the same wage as a, as a clerical person here at the government center, uh, I, I don't think that's correct.
Yeah, well, and I think, I think, you know, we've had a lot of wage turbulence in the past couple of years, and so it's, it can't hurt to reevaluate, make sure that our matrix does reflect the best, uh, wages and, and provides the, provides for the employees, so, in the most fair way, so.
I'd propose we take up this discussion, the second meeting in January, and go from there, and make no decision on it today.
Do you want a motion?
I, I don't think we need a motion.
Yeah, we move.
You can just, can you just...
We can, we can take no action on it.
We, we move it to, we, I move to postpone it.
Postpone it. Postpone it to the January second meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I move to postpone it to the second meeting of January.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. Discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose the same, motion carries.
Don, excuse me, we're gonna leave an alcohol pad on that fire pack. The John?
Sure.
Oh, I'd like to listen to you guys talk, but... Thank you, and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Roger.
Same to you. Next item on the agenda is GEO permit renewal update.
Gary, did you wanna handle this, or?
Sure. So, per last meeting request, you had asked me to contact Schneider and see if there was any way we could negotiate, uh, a change in, in price for our GEO permits, and, and so I negotiated to get a thousand dollars per month versus paying the new eighty-five-hundred-plus contract for the year.
You know, I, I think it makes sense to continue to do this, uh, for a few months for a smooth transition, so I, it, it's a good idea.
So, just, just a quick clarification, this says, uh, change order deletion of seventy-four hundred.
That was last, the last contract's price.
Okay, so...
They put that on there, yeah.
Yeah.
Because they're changing the old one.
Any other discussion?
No.
Entertain a motion?
Do we have the bill for that, for a thousand dollars a month?
No, the bill, why, this is, the agreement has to be signed first, then they'll invoice us, and they need to sign it yet also.
Move approval of the, uh, renewal on a monthly basis.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by John, to approve the GEO permit renewal update. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Yes, I'll, I need to get it signed, and then I'll send it to them.
Okay.
So, I'm assuming we got a thirty-day notice to them?
Yes, as it says here, uh, earlier termination of this agreement upon written notification by either party thirty days prior to the end of a term.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Pose the same?
Nay.
One nay. Motion carries.
Who is the nayer?
Ryan.
Okay.
Twelve thousand dollars.
I can't tell him, he's sitting next to him.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Does anyone want to have public comment? Hearing none?
Me, move, be adjourned.
Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Dan?
I'd move to adjourn.
Wanda, second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose the same, motion carries.
Just like to thank you and Wanda for your leadership this year, Don, so thank you guys.
Don't care if I'm even tired of you.
I will.
Okay, bye.
Thanks, Wanda.
Happy New Year.
Get well.
Don, do anything on that phone?
You did a nice job this morning.
I'm trying.
No, not you.
I said I never heard.
Bye, Wanda.